Start hitting it. You guys good? Good evening, everyone. This is a public hearing of the Zoning Board of Appeals of the City of Evanston. The zoning ordinance empowers this board to hear references from the city council, applications for variances and special uses, and appeals from decisions of the zoning administrator. Depending on the type of matter, we will either make a final determination or send a recommendation to the city council. Present tonight are board members Mary Beth Byrne, Scott Gingold, Beth McLennan, Clara Weinberg, and Andrew Gallimore. I'm Lori Summers, the current chair. We therefore have a quorum. Oh, and I will also note that Mr. Matthew Rogers is entering the room, so we have a full board here this evening. Also here tonight from city staff is Melissa Klotz. This is a formal hearing, and we have rules that govern our proceedings. Our most important rule is that only one person may speak at a time without interruption. It is not just civility, but it is necessary to accurately record our proceedings. Anyone who wishes to address the board regarding any matter on the agenda will have an opportunity to do so at the appropriate time. Our normal procedure is that we hear first from the staff on the documents in the file. We will then receive testimony and other evidence from the applicant or repellent. After the applicant or repellent has completed their initial submission, any person who has a legal interest in real property located within 500 feet of the property that is the subject of the application or appeal may then present evidence, reasonably question witnesses, or seek continuance of the hearing. Next, others who wish to make a statement regarding the matter may do so at that time. When all opposing testimony and other statements have been received, the applicant or repellent will be given an opportunity for rebuttal or closing statement. Board members may ask questions of anyone offering testimony or statements at any time. All testimony and statements will be under oath. Although we do not apply the strict rules of evidence, we ask that you limit your testimony or statement to your own personal knowledge. When you testify or make a statement, please tell us your name and address, and be sure that your name has been printed on the pad provided out at the door. Because we do not have our court reporter, it is imperative that you speak at our microphones so that your testimony or statement will be recorded. We are audio and video recorded in this room. When all the testimony, other evidence, and statements have been received, we will close the record and begin our deliberations. Our first matter of business on our agenda this evening is consideration of the meeting minutes for October 2, 2012. I was not at that meeting, but just under the declaration of quorum, I presume that a chairman was elected, somebody else who opened that, so if that correction could be Are there any other corrections to those minutes? If there are none, is there a motion regarding approval of those minutes?
I would move that we approve the meeting minutes for October 2, 2012 with the noted correction.
Second the motion.
It's been moved in second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And I will note an abstention. And an adjutant as well for Beth. Okay, so, moving on to our next agenda item. On the agenda, we have 2,500 Gross Point Road. It's my understanding that they're, due to the applicant's response to Spark Committee comments, this item is required to go back to Spark Committee and will not be heard this evening.
That is correct. The applicant submitted a revised plan last Wednesday, and will be heading back to Spark on October 24. They prefer to be heard by the zoning board on November 13, our next regularly scheduled meeting.
So, for clarity's sake, we should do a continuation of this item?
Yes, we should have a motion.
Okay. Quick discussion in terms of quorum. Are there going, do we expect any issues quorum-wise for November 13? Okay. Then with that, is there any other further discussion or a motion regarding the continuance of this matter?
I would move in matter ZBA 12 ZMJV 0066 regarding the property at 2,500 Gross Point Road, that we continue said matter to our meeting scheduled for November 13, 2012 at 7:30 in this room.
Second. It's been moved in second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion is carried unanimously, and the matter of 2,500 Gross Point Road will be carried over to our regularly scheduled meeting of November 13. The next item on our agenda is 2,400 Main Street. I presume the applicant is here? And if you could come forward, and at this point in time, I'd like to swear in anybody in the audience or from the applicant who wishes to speak with us at all this evening. If you could, raise your right hand, please. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth throughout the course of these proceedings? Thank you very much, everyone. And sir, if you could introduce yourself.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. My name is Steve Engelmann, and I'm the attorney for Food for Less, the applicant in this matter. I'd like to introduce to you David Koppenhofer, who is the Director of Midwest Real Estate for Food for Less, Natalie Mao, who is the project manager and facility engineer, Yuli Sala, he's with SSOE Architects and Engineers, the architect of the project, and David Miller of Sam Schwartz Engineering, who did the traffic study analysis and will be speaking tonight. Food for Less proposes to construct and operate an automobile service center on the outlet at the northeast corner of Main Street, Main Street Common Shopping Center, 2,400 Main Street, where it currently operates a grocery store. The property is owned C1, allowing shopping centers as a permitted use, and automobile service stations, a gas station. Does not do automobile repairs, does not do automobile washing. A gas station is a special use in this particular zoning district. To protect customers and equipment from inclement weather, the project also includes a canopy over the fueling area. Due to the topography of the property and the clearance safety issues for trucks coming by the canopy, Food for Less is also seeking a variance to allow the canopy height of 19 feet rather than the permitted height of 14.5 feet. In addition to five multi-product fuel dispensers, the project will include a kiosk with two washrooms accessible from the outside and a interior space that is not open to the public, and nor is it accessible to the public for a cashier. I would now present David Koppenhofer, who will take you through the project. Thank you.
Before we get into the presentation, actually, if I can just, since it's a good stopping point, if I could just make a couple of quick clarifications with staff. The term automobile service station in the zoning ordinance technically would also cover the use that did have repairs and washing, et cetera, et cetera?
No, that would be an automobile repair station. Automobile service station specifically means gas station.
Specifically means gas station, so there's no need for additional consideration there. Okay. Thank you. Sorry.
Could also add, Mr. Engelmann, just for the sake of disclosure, that Mr. Engelmann did represent me a couple of years back on his zoning matter before the board, but I've had no relationship with him since then, nor do I think it would affect my decision.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, did you want to read into the record the documents that have been submitted?
We'll get to that as we get to the various items, so...
David.
Thank you, Steve. As Steve indicated, my name is David Koppenhofer, and I'm the real estate manager for Food for Less's operations here in the greater Chicago area. For the sake of not taking far too long tonight, we wanted to give you a brief presentation that if you were not familiar, we've also had a community meeting with people that Alderman Braithwaite has pulled together, and much of the majority of this material was presented to them. We've brought it for you guys to try to give you a brief idea as to what it is that we're trying to do here at this shopping center. With that, just a brief generality here as to what the project is we're talking about. We are talking about the Main Street marketplace, talking about on the south side of Main Street here in Evanston. As we look at the site, what you see identified as 558 is our store number, the site identified with the arrow, excuse me, and the Sam's Club down at the southern portion of the shopping center. What I have here is a few just visuals to give you some perspective as to what we're talking about here, is a view as you're heading eastbound along Main Street with the arrow identifying the site. Once again, just turning in the other direction, heading westbound along Main Street, as you look directly south into the small shop space and into the vacant parcel that we're proposing for this fuel center use. And once again, the opposite direction facing north. I've left with two directions that I think just give some perspective to you as to where it is we're talking about on that undeveloped parcel that's included in your package. Once again, as I indicated, this is the shopping center, Food for Less and Sam's Club. Sam's, as you're aware, operates a fuel center within the shopping center today, and the site that we're talking about for ourselves is a proposed fuel center use on the undeveloped parcel. Some general information in terms of background, Rouse Grocery Company does business as Food for Less Midwest, is a wholly owned subsidiary of the Kroger Company. The enterprise currently employs more than 339,000 associates, serving customers in more than 2,400 supermarkets and multi-department stores across 31 different states. We operate under nearly two dozen different local banner names as a company, and we currently operate over 1,100 supermarket fueling station across the country. Within the greater Chicago area, we obviously operate under the Food for Less banner, where we employ over 1,400 associates, including myself and Natalie, while operating 16 supermarket locations and eight existing supermarket fueling locations. The Food for Less concept, if you're not familiar with it, is best described as a full-line warehouse-style format store, offering customers full-service offerings including fresh produce, meats, deli, and bakery products. We take pride in doing this while selling both a national and store brand products at very attractive prices. We take pride in our motto of truly trying to be the true low-price leader every day. Some brief description of the proposed project that we're talking about. It is a proposed installation of five MPDs, the multi-petroleum dispensers Steve alluded to, which really is 10 fueling pumps for 10 specific cars at any one time. We propose to provide unleaded, medium-grade, premium, regular, and diesel gasoline. Hours of operation would be from 5:00 a.m. to midnight, which is one hour before the store opens, and closing at the same time the food store closes. We'd also petition the state of Illinois as required to potentially service or serve customers credit card only without an manned attendant during the other hours of the evening. The proposed use, as described today before meeting with Spark, would provide a net increase of four parking spaces whereby we'd be removing 22 while adding back 26. As Steve alluded to, we'd be talking about the installation of an employee service kiosk. We're not talking about a full-blown walk-in convenience store. It will have two dual-facing restrooms per code, and the outdoor merchandise and sales and displays that we intend to provide are typical things you would expect at a fuel center, like bagged ice, bottled drinks, case water, automotive fluids, and the like. In terms of benefits, we think that it's a positive for the community and obviously the property and sales tax generation for a site that's undeveloped today. We have spent some time, interesting, trying to figure out exactly what we can tell you that we think will propose in regards to sales tax and property taxes. It's been quite a daunting task in trying to understand the multiple layers of taxes here in the state of Illinois and what actually does funnel to the city of Evanston. We commit, for instance, the state sales tax, which might be the most obvious, of six and a quarter. I think the city of Evanston gets one and a quarter percent from that. At our projected gallons, that's $150,000 a year. We're talking about an incremental tax revenue, and I want to be clear that that's just a baseline. I'm sure that you get more of the other 60 cents that's tacked on an average gallon of gas in this state. I simply can't tell you today what that percentage is. We obviously are talking about for us to do this, we're investing in our local business operations here with intentions on being around and serving the community for a long time to come, and maybe the most beneficial and specific benefit that most people would recognize is that we propose to offer discounted gas available to all consumers regardless of whether you shop at Food for Less. And a brief description of that process, describe it here and then get into a little bit more. We're going to give customers the opportunity to earn 10 cents off per every $100 of grocery purchases they make in a month. You can enjoy 10 cent savings up to 35 gallons. Every person will have the opportunity to save 3 cents off per gallon just by having a Fuel Saver card, and today you can enjoy that at eight fuel center, or eight of our supermarket locations. We're obviously looking for the opportunity to expand that. To get into a little bit more generality for all of you that may be aware of a Jewel or a Dominix card that you have to carry for their incentives inside the store and for their discounts, we propose we'll have a card that people will utilize. When you check out, you'll scan your card, and when you do buy more than $100 worth of groceries in a given month, you'll be able to go out to the pump and instantly get 10 cents off per gallon on any of the different range of fueling products that you have. More so in what we think's a definitive use as opposed to our competitor in the parking lot. We are open to everybody. Anybody can use it, whether you have our card or not is a requirement, or is not a requirement to using the fuel center. Anybody, even if you don't shop, you carry our card, you get 3 cents off per gallon just by going to the fuel center. The piece that I like to try to make clear to people is that it really is an incentive program for us. We do this for a basis of obviously trying to generate traffic inside of our stores. People think the concept that you would just increase your prices by 10 cents, and really it's not a discount to anybody else, you'll come to find with our pricing program, it's to try to match the local lowest competitor at any one time to make our gas discount really something that's worthwhile to people. Without getting into more specifics, may hand it over to you and Natalie, who are going to speak a little bit to our site layout, the landscaping, and the elevations.
Can I ask a quick question or two?
Sure.
Is the fuel center going to be owned and operated by the Ralph's Company that owns the grocery store?
That's correct.
Okay. And can you tell us approximately how much money it will cost the company to build the gas station?
Yeah. Two points, to be clear, when we talk about owned and operated, we are a proposed, it's a ground lease for the shopping center. The shopping center's owner, represented here by Damon Dance of the Bond Companies, who won't own the center, but be clear that we do intend to operate it as part of the grocery store. In regards to an investment, I think our budget is a million two in regards to what the total investment would be to operate, or to build and ultimately open at this site, excuse me, a fuel center at this site.
Hello. Okay. This is just a brief, oh, Natalie Mao, 1510 Foothill Court, Wheaton, Illinois. This is our site layout, and, thank you. As David mentioned, we have, uh-oh. Oh, there it goes. Oh, I think I was pressing buttons. Sorry. We have our five MPD fuel center with our kiosk and restrooms located right here. Our fuel trucks come in off of Main Street, pull off to the side, unload their fuel, and then drive down behind the center, and there's a large area behind the center where they will turn around and then exit out going north, in turn, most likely east. The, on Main. I guess, are there any questions regarding the equipment, the layout, the...
Can you, can you explain, can you explain how the fuel is stored, I assume in underground storage tanks?
Yes. These, these two capsules you see right here are double-wall storage tanks that, the large one will hold the unleaded, the base tank of the dual capsule will hold the diesel, and then the end tank here will hold the premium, and the mid-grade is actually a blend of the premium and the unleaded. And the double-wall storage tanks have an interstitial space between the interior and exterior tank that have a brine solution that's monitored.
Can you take questions now? I'm going to sign in.
Well, once we get, if you have specific questions for a specific person that's up here, if you think you will have those, then I can stop after each, we can stop after each presenter if you think you will. So, we can do that. So, getting...
There are probably five minutes left.
Okay. Let's just get back to the site plan really quick.
So, has the Ralph's, I'll call it the Ralph's Company, because I'm sure I'm not saying the right, has the Ralph's Company indemnified the property owner for damage caused by the underground storage tanks?
That is part of our standard ground lease with them. Our landlord will require us to...
Oh, sorry, I'm gonna, if you're gonna talk, I have to have you at the microphones that I can hear you. Sorry.
Yes, we would indemnify our landowner as part of our standard ground lease and take on the responsibility ourselves for any, anything that would happen potentially in the future, certainly non-expected.
There have been environmental impact studies done on the existing site.
We've done a standard. You want to talk to that now?
Phase one.
Yes, we've done a geotechnical survey as well as a phase one, and everything has come back clean.
My name's Yuli Sala with SSOE, located at 1050 Will Shatter Drive in Troy, Michigan. I guess I'll just continue on the presentation. Another thing that we also mentioned is we're moving these parking spaces over here. There's 22 parking spaces that will be removed, but we are adding 26 spaces, so there's really a net gain of four. And then touch on landscaping. Basically, our landscaping plan has been pretty simple. We'll try to put landscaping wherever we have room to place landscaping. There is some existing landscaping on the north side of this existing sidewalk here, and we're not going to, we're not going to modify that existing landscaping, but we are adding landscaping around the new monument sign, as well as landscaping around the air pedestal, where people can fill up their tires with air. Also, we're adding a strip of landscaping along this side, as well as a tree and some additional landscaping here, and we are adding an island here with, again, additional landscaping. And just a couple pictures of landscaping for your benefit, really. We're adding the Cleveland select pear and a couple of bushes, which is the boxwood and the burning bush, as well as some decorative plants like the Maynight Meadow and dwarf This is a color elevation of typical fuel center, and actually, this is the color elevation for this specific fuel center. We are adding, we're showing the signage on all elevations, as well, it's going to use the standard platinum and red color scheme, and you can see, you can note that the kiosk here, that the two doors, the two rear doors are the restrooms, and then this is the door for the attendant inside. It is actually, as we mentioned, it's not open to the public. And I'd also like to talk...
What's the elevation of the building of the market center that's already existing? What's the elevation of that building?
I actually don't have that information available, of the existing marketplace.
Yeah, that this would be across the lot from?
I'm not sure, although I'm willing to bet that this fuel center will be lower than that. But again, I don't have that information.
I'm not allowed to bet on those.
No, I, I don't have that information.
We have a representative from the landlord.
Oh, there we go.
Sir, I'm not sure if I had you sworn in in the beginning, did I?
I'll swear in.
Okay. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth throughout the course of these proceedings?
I do.
Thank you very much. And if you could...
Damon Dance Bond Companies, 1459 North Larribery Street, Unit B, Chicago, Illinois. As far as the elevation is concerned, or the height of the building is approximately 20 feet tall. In terms of the aesthetic or the composition, we have a cast stone base with brick with storefront. I'm not sure if you're alluding to the aesthetic in terms of what, whether or not Food for Less would match that, or if you were concerned about the height, but hopefully that covers what you're asking for.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm trying to gauge what the height of the proposed canopy would be versus the rest of the landscape.
And that's the next thing that I like to talk about because we are requesting a variance from the ordinance on the height of the canopy. I believe the, the ordinance specifies a maximum canopy height because it is considered an accessory, accessory building at 14 feet. However, the, the maximum height of a semi truck is 13 and a half feet. And our canopy actually has a three and a half foot fascia. So at our best point, if you use the 14 foot, at our best point, we have 10 and a half feet of clearance underneath the canopy. While the semi truck doesn't necessarily have to go underneath the canopy, depending on how they're maneuvering, they may have, they may get into a position where they do have to get underneath the canopy, which is one of the main reasons why we are proposing a variance. And we're asking for a 19 foot, 19 foot tall canopy.
Can you, can you go back to the drawing that showed sort of the, the overhead plan for the lot?
Truck movement?
Yeah, so can you just sort of demonstrate how it is that semi trucks would get in and out of this? Maybe the one that had the island view also? Yeah, that?
This one?
Yeah, so how is it that semi trucks would get in and off of, get in and out of here from Main Street?
A semi truck's gonna come in through Main Street traveling east. And it's gonna enter this easternmost drive here. It's gonna travel down, pull off to the side, getting fairly close to this corner of the canopy. It'll pull off to the side here, unload, and then it will keep traveling south into the rear of the site. Let me see if this is a better explanation.
Just, I'm not seeing your pointer very well, I'm sorry.
Can you see the truck right here then?
Those are the tire tracks, like those squigglies?
The, here are the tire tracks, but the, the outline is actually an envelope of the truck, not necessarily the tires. This is the envelope of the truck, of the truck as it's traveling. So it's gonna pull in again here to the right, make a right turn into the, into the shopping center, pull off to the side, stop here in this designated striping, unload, and then travel south.
So the truck, the truck that's pictured there needs to swing across to the opposite side of Main Street and able to, in order to be able to swing into the parking lot?
Not necessarily opposite side of the, it will take a wide right turn. It will actually still have, you still have, there's, this is the center line of the street. There will still, it will not impact traffic flow going west. Any traffic going west on Main Street will not be impacted by this truck turning right. Clarify your, your question, does that answer it?
I think so.
The north-south turn in private property, is that a right of way?
Here?
Yes.
It's private property, there's an utility easement there, but it's still pri, it's private property. And it actually travels back to the rear of the site where there's an open parking lot. And I was actually there a few weeks ago. There's plenty of semi trucks, semi trucks there already parked and turning around. We have. We have no doubt that the truck can make the turn here. The issue with the canopy height is when the truck is pulling in here. And while this envelope is our best estimate with the software that we have, the, the truck driver may take a harder turn and may end up going underneath this, this corner. And that's where we'd like to make sure he has at least adequate room so that there's no collision between the truck and the canopy. From a safety perspective.
This may be a question for the traffic study guy, but what, what percentage of your customers do you envision being semi truck traffic versus, I think the prior presentation said that the goal was that the gas station customers would be the food for less customers?
The semi truck will actually only be there two to three times a week only to, only to fill the underground storage tanks.
Oh, so you're not envisioning truck fill-ups, you're talking about.
Absolutely not, no, this is a semi truck that is actually filling the underground storage tanks with the product that can be then again sold at the dispensers. And again, going back to requesting the 19 foot canopy height, what that does to us, also I'd like to mention that there is some topography issues here. The kiosk, this is our kiosk right here, it has to sit at a high point, make sure all the drainage flows away from it. And everything actually drains to the, to the north to catch basins over here in this area. And what that happens is there's a grade differential from here to here of, I think a foot and nine inches, 1.72 I believe, if I called the number correctly. Yes. So what happens is at this point, if we do have a maximum height of 19 feet, which is what we are recommending and also Spark Review recommended the same, at 19 feet, if you subtract a three and a half foot fascia, we get to 15 and a half feet for the clearance at this point at the northeast corner. And at the, at the southeast corner, we get a clearance of just over 14 feet because of the grade differential at the site. Which really gives a truck driver with a 13 six, 13 and a half foot truck, six inches of, of room above his truck.
Are you good for now? Why don't we move on? Sir, did you, there's a member from the audience, if there's any questions for, regarding the material that's been presented so far, why don't you ask those at this time? And then we'll move on to the traffic study.
Good evening, my name is Stephen Shostak from Oakbrook Metro Partners LLC. And we operate the facility directly to the east of the property, 2300 Main Street. It's a shopping center, multi-use shopping center. And the first question I have associated with what's outlined here is the setbacks associated with the tanks from the lot line.
Yeah, and I'd have to look at the actual record for the setback for, I believe it is 25 feet. I can't attest to that at the moment. Here, from here to here, I can measure it off of my full-size plans, actually I could get a more accurate answer. But during construction, when we do submit these drawings to the state for their approval, we have to submit to the state for the underground storage tanks, and we do have to meet all their requirements. And that is one of their requirements, the setback of the underground storage tanks from the lot line and from any adjacent or any nearby buildings.
Well, can you clarify of all those dashed lines? There's four or five of them? Which ones, which one's the property line?
Property line is here.
That one, okay.
Let me see if there's a better plan that shows the property line. Property line is, there's actually, this is the parcel line for the Fuel Center.
Right.
But the property line for the overall, for the overall development is actually to the right of it along this side.
Thank you.
Sir, did you have another question?
No, not at the moment.
Thank you. All right, just looking at my packet of information here, I wasn't sure how much we were gonna overlap here, but it looks like we've got kind of varying degrees. So I am gonna really quickly go through and reiterate that we do have for our records a copy of the presentation that is being, is ongoing at this point. And separately from that, we do have, so I'm gonna call that applicants A. And separately from that, we do have a binder of presentation materials. Melissa, do we have, is there a further list that was previously put into the record that we might not have in front of us at this point?
Included with the application booklet that the applicant submitted prior to the meeting are the standards form for the special use as well as the variance, the special use application, and an image of the property, an aerial view of the property, a zoning map, and the Spark meeting minutes from October 3rd, 2012. The applicant also submitted just before the meeting, an update to the traffic plan. The first page in the booklet is the introduction to the traffic plan that was omitted from the applicant's bigger booklet. And also on the last page of that plan is some clarification on the traffic study.
Thank you. I think that's probably it for site plan right now. So you, did you guys have further presentation regarding?
The only further presentation would be the traffic. And I know that came up during the meeting, so I'd like to have Dave Miller present the impact that this would have on traffic.
Great, thank you.
Good evening, my name is Dave Miller. I'm a senior vice president with Sam Schwartz Engineering. And we did prepare the traffic study for this Fuel Center. You got an updated copy. The only really difference between that and the previous one is there was a couple of typos in the, in the back section there and wanted to make sure that you had the most up to date on that. But just to give you a quick update of what we did as part of the traffic study. Initially, we did traffic counts at the intersections of Main and the West Drive and Fowler, the East Access Drive and then Pitner. We did these for the morning peak period from seven to nine, evening from four to six, and on Saturday to, from 11 to one. This way it gave us a good idea of the existing traffic and, and the movements in and out specifically of the two access drives on either side of the property. We then estimated the amount of traffic that would be generated by the site. And we used the typical standards from the Institute of Transportation Engineers for similar type facilities. We did contact or talked with Food for Less and based on surveys of their other sites where they have a fuel facility, about 35% of the traffic that uses the Fuel Center are people who are using the existing grocery store. And so we took an internal capture rate of that 35%, reduced the amount of traffic that typically you might have at a Fuel Center by that amount. So in the morning peak hour, the two-way traffic would be about 60 vehicles. In the evening, it's about 85, and on Saturday is about 130. I think the 35% reduction for the internal capture is probably even low because you have obviously other customers within the whole, the rest of the Main Street marketplace that could also use this facility and would have already been accounted for in the traffic counts that we did previously. So I think we're being somewhat conservative. But those were the numbers that we, we utilized for this study. Then we look at where is the traffic coming from? And in this case, using the, really the, the traffic that was using both the West and the East Access Drive, because those, that's the traffic that's primarily gonna be wanting to go to this facility. And based on our existing traffic counts, a substantial amount, in fact, the average percentage of traffic for all three peak hours was in excess of 80% from the east and about 15 or 20% from the west. And, and a smaller amount from Fowler and Pitner. So as well, as part of our study then, we adjusted it slightly. We set 78% from, from the east, 16% from the west, and then the remaining 6% was split between Fowler and Pitner. We then take that percent distribution plus the projected site traffic and assign the traffic to the surrounding roadways and specifically the two access drives, both on the west and the east. And then we combine that site traffic with the existing traffic to have what we call total traffic assignment. And that's what we then use as part of our analysis to see what if any recommendations need to be done for the site. In looking at the, the combination of the West Access and Fowler Avenue, we would be adding about for the three peak hours in the westbound direction to turn left into the West Access between 14 and 30 left turns during the, the three peak hours. So an average of one vehicle every two to four minutes. The left turn lane, if you're familiar with it, the, the traffic is going westbound. There's one through lane, and then there's a separate left turn lane at the West Access Drive. That left turn lane does extend, although it is broken, but there's stacking for the left-hand, westbound left turn lane does extend slightly past Fowler. But the, the westbound left turns, and I've observed that from our traffic studies, those left turns into the site at the West Access do clear. They get breaks in the traffic from the traffic signal at the main entrance to the Main Street Marketplace. And so that, the westbound left turns really do not back up past Fowler Avenue. We're really not going to be adding any southbound left turns from Fowler to go east on, on Main. And so the traffic that's there now, which is between 20 and 30 left turns during the, the three peak hours, it's like any driveway, you've gotta wait for a gap in the traffic on Main Street. But from my personal observations and the people who did our traffic counts, that was really not a movement that was creating and an issue from a traffic standpoint. So at the intersection of the West Access Drive and Main Street, we feel that that, with the additional traffic, can be handled adequately. At the East Access Drive and Pitner, again, in the, in the westbound direction, you have one through lane, there is on-street parking, some on the north side of Main Street just opposite the East Access Drive. And then a painted median, it's not a full width left turn. It's probably somewhere around six or seven feet, enough that one car can sit on there. And then a through vehicle can pass that car if they're waiting. And, and then you've got on-street parking. It's not the greatest in terms of operations. And so one of the recommendations that we made in there, if feasible, is to, the no parking on the north side of Main Street ends right about here, right past the car place. What we are recommending is possibly extending that no parking about two more spaces east of, of where it currently ends. What that would do is it would give a little bit more flexibility for people who are heading westbound. If somebody is sitting on that narrow crosshatch median, that they can get around them more conveniently than they do right now. The other option, because in the, in the eastbound direction, Main is two lanes till you get right past, right before you get to the East Access Drive, then it starts narrowing down to a wide single lane. And even when you get to Pitner, it's still a wide single lane. It's a possibility that just with some restriping of that median, that you could taper it such that you could create more storage area within that median area right by the East Access Drive. So that's again, that's something that the city could consider, but we think that would help the operations. It, it works right now, but I think it could work better either with the removal of the on-street parking or the modification to the median. In terms of the operation of, of both these intersections of what we call level of service, and you're probably familiar with that term, it either goes from a level of service A, which is the best, to level of service E or F, which is not so good. All the intersections or all the operations at Main Street in both the West Access and the East Access, with the additional site traffic, stay at the same level of service as they have right now with one exception. And at the East Access Drive and Main Street on Saturday, it went from a level of service C to a level of service D, barely. Level of service D is still an acceptable level of service with, within the state, within the counties and most municipalities. So in my opinion, that's not a, an issue or concern. But it is something that slightly changed from existing to with the additional site traffic. But overall, even with the additional site traffic we're talking about, the impact on both of these intersections is, is minimal. Natalie covered the truck circulation coming into the site and the operations. And as part of the turnaround was to go down in this area, utilize the existing parking area, which really has very few, if any, people parking down here, and then to circulate around and come back up to Main Street. And they could either turn left or right at that point. And finally, on the internal circulation of this, of the plan, as was mentioned, there's 10 fueling positions. And the stacking on that is, is gonna be minimal. Typically, you would have one, very rarely. Typically, you would have one, very rarely would you have two people stacked at the same fueling position. And so the internal circulation and access around the site should be more than adequate. That's, so in summary, I guess, from the traffic standpoint, I feel what is being presented is going to have a, really a minimal impact on the surrounding roads and intersections and internally to the site. Thank you.
Sir, where is Sam Schwartz Engineering located?
Oh, I'm sorry, it's in Hoffman Estates. Our address is thirty-one hundred Higgins Road in Hoffman Estates.
And what's the business of the company?
It's a multi-discipline, primarily traffic and transportation firm.
Did you conduct, did you write this report?
Yes.
Okay. And I assume Ralph's company paid your fees for generating this study?
Yes.
Okay. Did you take into account the other gas stations in the area that this one might take additional traffic from?
Not really. I mean, we do existing counts, and then we add on what we anticipate based on other studies that would be added to the site. I don't really get into the market studies to see if there's going to be a change at one gas station or another. That's really not my expertise.
I read in the application that this service station offered a benefit to the community because it would compete in price with other gas stations, so it occurred to me, it might be relevant, what other gas stations were in the area. Did you survey the area to look what other gas stations were around?
That was not my charge. Mine was just primarily just the traffic. Others may be able to handle the economics part of that, but again, mine was really just to focus on the traffic impact.
Wouldn't the traffic from other gas stations be relevant?
You know, it's interesting, I, personally, I've been involved in, in excess of a hundred studies for different gas stations over twenty-five, thirty years. And in all of those studies, that question's never come up. It's never been an issue that's been raised. You know, I guess, there could be some potential economics, but I, as I said, again, I, that's not really a traffic issue, per se, as it relates to me. I want to make sure that what we're adding to the site is going to be able to be accommodated.
Scott, are you aware of where the nearest gas station is to that?
There's a gas station on the other side of Main and McCormick?
Yes.
I've, I've worked on gas stations, I don't think they do it as much now, but if you probably remember in the past, you had some intersections where there was three gas stations on, you know, all four corners or something like that. And so, the concept of competition has been there for as long as I can remember.
My concern is that this, I, as an Evanston driver, not as a zoning board member, I find this particular strip of Main Street to be frustrating one to drive down. It is fairly congested, at least at the times I seem to be there. So to me, any incremental traffic is a potential burden. So it's, that's why I'm asking whether you considered these other sources.
From a pure traffic standpoint, this probably maybe is one of the lower uses. You know, other retail uses that could be on the site, whether they would be restaurants or other types of thing, typically would generate more, much more traffic than the site.
Except for McCormick is a very busy street. It's sort of a through street through Evanston, and so if there's a destination gas station that offers the cheapest prices in Evanston right there off Main Street, I suspect that it will drive traffic.
And we've taken that into account. I mean, the studies and that we use from ITE are based on studies of many hundreds of stations throughout the United States, and so, a lot of those kinds of issues that you raise have typically been taken into account. So, I understand the question, again, it's usually not a traffic issue, per se. It may be more of a business or an operation question or issue, if you want to address that to them.
Thanks.
Sir, in the course of your, in the course of your work, could, have you observed in general, the customary height of, bridge height, et cetera, that might be, I guess I'm thinking about this canopy and the canopy height variance, and it seems like there's, it seems like there's probably a customary minimum bridge height in general for vehicles, and that's, I just wasn't sure if that was something that you would come across in the course of your work.
Yeah.
Maybe, I just didn't know. I didn't know the extent of their kind of transportation engineering work, so I just thought, he may or may not be more.
To your question, as far as to bridge height on interstates, I believe it is thirteen six minimum, thirteen point five, so thirteen feet six inches, whereas on small roads, actually there is, I don't think there is a minimum, as long as there is posted signs that say low clearance, so that truck drivers know their height, the height of their truck to know to navigate around it. But on state highways, yes, it is a minimum of thirteen six. And I'd also like to mention, as you brought up, that the Sam's, the Sam's gas station that is to the south, southwest of this site, was given variation on their canopy to eighteen, eighteen feet six inches. We're asking for this, for the full nineteen because of the site topography, and the site layout is obviously different with each fuel center. And really, the alternative to that is no canopy at all, and that's certainly not acceptable for not only marketing, but safety and comfort to the users.
Sir, did you have any questions related to traffic?
Yeah, I do, I have, yes, I do. I have two questions I'd like to pose. The first is whether or not the board knows what the overall distance is from the existing Sam's Club facility to this proposed facility in the same shopping center. And the second is, as relates to the Sam's facility, what is the traffic pattern there?
We're going to have to answer it with an unfortunate answer, in the fact that I cannot stipulate exactly what the distance is from the Sam's Club to the Food for Less store.
We may be able to get that from the survey.
Twelve hundred feet.
Well, I didn't study, you know, specifically the Sam's Club access, that wasn't our charge, but in being out and driving the area and looking to site and kind of following people, is, I think basically, they've got three different ways that they come in. There's the Main Access Drive, the signalized access drive on Main, and this drive can take you all the way down to the Sam's Club down here. You have the West Drive, which again, goes in front of these stores, including the Food for Less, and goes down to this area where the Sam's. And I've also observed people, specifically if they're coming from the east, turning left here and going behind the stores, in the rear of these stores to go down to the Sam's. So, I'm not sure what that split is between those three drives. I would suspect that the majority are using the signalized drive. People just find it easier to get in and out with the signal, but it does appear that they've got three different ways to get to that site.
Are there any other questions before I?
Any other questions at this time from the board? It does not appear so. You may continue, Mr. Engleman.
Thank you. The special use will not interfere with or diminish the value of property in the neighborhood, nor cause a negative cumulative effect upon the neighborhood. The specific property is bounded by commercial and industrial, commercial and industrially zoned properties immediately adjacent to it. These properties then buffer the residential community to the north and to the east. So, the use that is being proposed here will complement the adjoining uses rather than having any negative impact on them. In addition, this property has been vacant, this outlot has been vacant for close to ten years. This project will bring some activity to the outlot, increase the tax base, increase the sales tax revenue, and increase the revenue to the city. The property is adequately served by public facilities and services, and for the reasons explained by Mr. Miller, will not cause an undue impact on traffic congestion. There was a neighborhood meeting sponsored by Alderman Braithwaite, two weeks ago, for the neighborhood about this project. There was no opposition at that neighborhood meeting of the gas stations. There was concern raised about the congestion of people who live on Fowler, being able to get out on Main Street during the peaks afternoon rush hour. The Alderman has left that meeting telling the residents that he would be discussing with the city what possible ways the city might be able to address this. One suggestion that they were talking about, but I'm not sure that the city is going to find appropriate, is moving the current stoplight at McDaniel up to Pittner. I don't know whether that will actually fly, but Alderman Braithwaite is trying to address the congestion issue. The testimony here is that there will be no further adverse impact occasioned by this property. With regard to the question of proximity of two gas stations, at just south of Simpson, north of Emerson, on Green Bay Road, there are across the street from each other, a mobile station and a Citgo station. And as was pointed out, there is another gas station at the end of Main Street on the other side of McCormick, that's in Skokie. And Skokie gets the sales tax from that, and et cetera. The proximity, just as, the proximity of the two gas stations causes one necessarily to compete with the other, and competition tends to drive down to the lowest price possible, which will, in the long run, help the consumer. And that's why this, this location is not going to create a drain on, from existing, it's not going to cause a drain from other properties. In fact, it will actually increase revenues to the city if it draws in people that otherwise go to the Skokie locations. The need for the variation is due to the property's particular peculiarity, excuse me, for safe operation, as well as, there must be sufficient clearance for the tanker, and due to the topography, the sloping nature of the land, needed for clearance. And the alternative, as was said, is putting no canopy there at all. Not only is that inappropriate from a marketing point of view, because you need to shelter automobile drivers from the inclement weather, but it is also important from a safety perspective. You don't want people running out and standing in the rain and trying to stick gas into their gas tank while staying out of the rain. The property owner would suffer a hardship if the variation is not granted. Just one second, please. I'm trying to make sure that I address all the questions that were raised. And as I stated, the property use will complement the existing uses, enhance revenue, and strengthen the tax base. I believe that the presentation, including the booklets that you've received, demonstrate that the project meets all of the standards for both a special use and a variation. We are requesting a positive recommendation to the Evanston City Council, and we thank you for your patience.
Mr. Engleman, quick question. I presume if I were to plow through a proposed lease, that there would be no exclusivity issues with the Sam's Club gas station?
There would be no exclusivity problems with the gas station. I seriously doubt that either of these very well-known and large companies would not have done that. Yes, I'm getting a yes.
Okay. Are there any other questions from Mr. Engleman at this time?
Do you guys have any drawings of what this is going to look like once the gas station is erected? Any kind of mock drawings, what the view is going to look like?
The answer is no. We haven't authorized full-blown architectural drawings whereby we'd create something like that until this process is fully seen its way through council.
The next best thing is really the color elevation that we presented, and actually a fully rendered elevation is not required per the guidelines of the special use application. So that was the reason why we didn't.
If seeing none at this time, we'll take public comment. Is there anyone who wish to speak to us regarding this at this time?
Yes, I'd like to. I'll make it brief. As the representative of the property owner next door, I think, on behalf of the ownership, we believe that another service station directly next door to the property, which is another shopping center, is going to have a dramatic economic impact. Another gas station's not necessary. And frankly, what I'd like to do is request a continuance, so that the owner's counsel can be present.
What's the, what's the negative impact that you think is going to happen from having a gas station on the next door property?
Primarily environmental, as well as visibility.
Visibility, meaning can you flush that out a little bit?
Visibility for consumers and customers coming into the shopping center.
Would you have the same objection if it was a, if it was another bank there, perhaps? That would actually be fully a building from twenty feet up all the way down versus just a canopy? That might actually hide your spaces more?
Or less?
Than just the canopy?
Meaning as opposed to less?
Yes, as opposed to a canopy, which has actually see-through and you can see under it, versus a solid building, which they could put on that outlot. It could be a McDonald's, it could be, you know, a Steak 'n Shake, it could be another bank, it could be any of those things. And any of those things are going to be a solid building that may prohibit your view more than just a canopy, which will allow the sightline underneath of it.
Yeah, the owners are not objecting to the idea of developing the parcel. Really what is at stake here is the economic viability of the property next door. And that goes hand in hand with visibility. So, I can't answer your question unless we had an alternative drawing. So, I can't answer your question unless we had an alternative drawing.
So, in your mind, you don't see the additional traffic that a gas station brings in as additional potential customers to your mall, to your strip center?
I question how much additional traffic there would be generated.
Based on what?
The existing gas station 1,200 feet away, as well as the other gas station at McCormick and Main.
Okay. Was that it for now?
That's it.
Okay, thanks. Are there any, was there anyone else who wished to speak with us regarding, from the public, who wished to speak with us regarding this matter?
Just a quick question on the topographic survey. I didn't see one in here that showed the foot and a half difference. Do you have a topographic survey?
We do, only because we're continuing the design on it, but it is actually not required, again, in that packet of special use.
Okay.
Application, the topography is not required to be submitted.
Just because it's not, just to clarify, just because it's not required doesn't mean that we might, I understand why you didn't necessarily provide it, and we're not saying that you should assume what we want. We're just saying that because your request is, because your request is specifically very closely related to that information, it would be helpful for us to see the proof in the pudding, if you will, of where that comes from. So, the list is a suggestion, but sometimes additional information is helpful in getting us to the end zone.
And actually, the topography, designing a site, the majority of the design is the topography and the drainage.
Right. So presumably you have a-
And at the time, it wasn't designed. It wasn't fully designed.
But at this point, I think all Mary Beth's asking is, you probably have a preliminary civil plan at this point.
We do have a preliminary plan, right.
Okay. So, okay, so at this time, we've run through initial presentation, we've had some citizen comment, and we also have a request for a continuance from the neighboring property owner.
I don't really hear any, I'm sorry, I don't really hear any specific objections to make me think it's warranted to continue the issue.
Our traditional operating procedure has been if a continuance has been requested, everybody gets one. It's a little disconcerting to me that a continuance was not requested upfront. It sounded like there were going to be questions, that council was not available for the neighboring property, and so we've allowed the applicant to go through their process of presenting. They will now be asked to come back and re-present.
Well, not necessarily re-present, but-
But the thing is, if council is coming, council is going to re-address all of these issues, I'm assuming, from the neighboring property.
I know that has been our policy to, you know, everybody gets one. Would it be slightly different this time because this is going to council, and so presumably someone that had serious legitimate objections to what was happening would be able to then present those objections at council rather than now?
Council relies on us, though, to act as the hearing on this. Citizens who come to council are limited to how much they can speak, what they're allowed to represent, et cetera, et cetera. And so, our purpose has always been to get a transcript down, so hopefully we ask the questions council has, and therefore, there isn't any comment or questioning before council.
Right. I was just trying to find a way on that.
I sort of feel on the continuance issue that it would have been appropriately raised at the beginning, and as you indicated, Matt. And I think in the instances where we say everybody gets one, it's so that people can be here, but the gentleman that requested it here purported to be speaking on behalf of the organization. So, I don't think that, I'm opposed to a continuance. I think there was notice of the meeting, and anybody who could have been here and wanted to be, could have been.
I would add to Matt's comments, which I agree with, that while it doesn't happen often, we do often have scenarios where because applicants come in and present information that was not available in the packet, there often becomes a continuance, there often becomes continuance request in situations where we do have neighbors because they haven't, you know, you get the opportunity to come in and look at the packet, but if there's information that wasn't part of the packet, or testimony that wasn't part of the packet, therefore, you might not be prepared to rebut or further comment on that information because it wasn't available in advance. So those are, I guess I would just add that as my additional kind of comment and concern related to that, that point.
I would add, though, that in my opinion, nothing new has been presented that created the continuance. I mean, I'm willing to grant a continuance, I believe the legal term is with prejudice, or something along those lines. I mean, it's just frustrating to have to go through an entire presentation and then ask everybody who's been here presenting to come back, and it appears that the neighboring property owner wants to speak with council. I feel that all should have been done beforehand, and council should have been made available here tonight to advise him. But I also believe that it is within his rights to request a continuance.
My thought is I'm typically the champion of the property rights of individual owners, but in this case, I feel it's what I presume to be a savvy investment group that is the objector.
Well, I don't think we should presume that just because a continuance has been asked, that we all have a quorum on the special use and the variance being requested. So, I agree that it's annoying that, you know, the continuance is asked late in the game, however, there still needs to be a discussion about the topic amongst us.
About the-
Well, is this a detriment to the area? I think there is a commute, additional harm to the area. It's becoming a ghetto of service stations. I mean, the strip mall that's there, although it's trying in its architectural artifact, adding a gas station in front of it doesn't add anything to the area. Not sure whether, you know, just because it's a C1 doesn't mean that it has to be a gas station. We could have a restaurant, it could be a McDonald's, it could be a number of other things. This isn't the only revenue source that could happen on that site, so.
I guess organizationally, in terms of the meeting, what I'm trying to do is, I want us to have our discussion in terms of whether or not we're going to provide a continuance, and I would like to hear a motion with respect to that, and we would settle that issue. And regardless of whether it's tonight or at another date, we will have any closing, you know, closing comment if Mr. Engelman has any after the public comment, and of course, then we would fully have our deliberations as well. So, we're definitely not going to skip that, but I want to-
I would just echo, I'd echo Matt's comment. I don't think a continuance is warranted. I don't think there's, was anything new introduced or any reason given for a continuance that couldn't or shouldn't have been taken care of in advance of this meeting, for which notice was provided, and we've now spent an hour and a half hearing the case and discussing it.
All right, well, I'm, okay. I'm not comfortable not kind of going with the give-it-one rule, especially with respect to mention a council, so that's going to be my position, but I will entertain a motion either way.
I would move in the matter 12ZMJV0068 for 2,400 Main Street for special use and a variance, that we grant a continuance expressing our displeasure at the, at the late hour for which it was presented, when no new issues were presented during the course of this meeting.
What are we continuing for? So, I mean, we've now heard testimony, so are we purportedly-
We are continuing to give-
Are we purportedly continuing so that a lawyer representing the next-door property can come in and ask questions? Is that-
We are continuing because the next-door neighbor has a right, based on our rules, to request a continuance, to prepare rebuttal to any information that was presented here tonight.
I think that's a dangerous precedent.
It's-
It's a precedent that we've done it before.
We have it.
It's not a new procedure.
It's in our, it's, I pretty much-
It's specifically within our rules, that anybody within 250 feet of the subject property is allowed to request one continuance.
Is allowed to request one?
Yes.
Yes. It's even in my entry speech.
Is he requesting a rebuttal to anything he's heard tonight, or is on the premise of there's an economic impact in his opinion? I don't hear any specific reasons.
A reason doesn't have to be given for a continuance necessarily, other than they would like to speak with council, which is within their rights.
They don't, at least from my understanding, they, yes, I agree, they don't need to-
Right now, I was just saying that I don't-
Provide specific reasons.
Right now, I was just saying, though, was it a continuance because he wanted to rebut testimony that we've heard today?
Well, I'm just saying that that's part of the, that's part of our standard, I don't, I'm pretty sure-
It is in our rules.
It's part of our standard, I believe it's aligned specifically in our rules, that they have the opportunity to, to review whether or not, and they have the opportunity to review and come back and say, okay, now that we've had a chance to review with our attorney, we don't actually have any rebuttal. I mean, but that's at their purview to request, so that they have that opportunity to review.
To request. We don't have to grant it. They have the opportunity to request it.
It's been our practice to-
So, I've got a motion on the table. Do I have a second for the motion?
Second.
It's been moved and second. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Sorry, you guys, I didn't hear. Were you, nothing? Okay. So, all opposed, nay?
Nay.
All right. So, I've got, do I hear four to three on that? So, I have four to three vote on the motion to grant the requested continuance, with all parties' commentary, I'm sure carefully recorded. So, we will, I don't think that there's any further need for testimony at this point. Sure, if I could have you at the microphone, though, Mr. Engelman, thank you.
We have a problem because Mr. Miller is not going to be able to make it to the, is the next meeting the 13th?
No.
Yes.
Yes, that is correct.
The next meeting is November 13th? Yeah.
So, my question is, and neither can Ms. Mao, is the continuance going to be done to allow cross-examination of the existing witnesses, or is it just to present new evidence of their own?
I don't know. So, let's look at, let me look at dates really here, quickly here first. So, I have meetings, if I'm correct, Melissa, for the 13th and the 27th of November.
That is correct.
Okay. If I could, would you guys be able to make the 27th of November?
It's the Tuesday after Thanksgiving.
Given that it's such a long timeframe, would we entertain throwing in another meeting in October?
How did we end up with a 13-27 meeting anyways?
Oh, because you can't have November 4th.
Oh, November 6th, because it's the election. So, we pushed the whole thing off, that's how we ended up there, okay.
Again, the question was, are they being cross-examined so that they have to be here, or are they, is this for the presentation of new information? If it's for cross-examination, if they could submit the questions in writing in advance, we can have the answers prepared by the individual, if that's what, if that would be helpful.
Okay. Sir, if I could have you step up for a second here.
Yes.
In the interest of trying to, you know, be reasonable with people's time.
Understand.
Do you, is it agreeable to you that if there's any specific questions that you might have going forward with respect to traffic, that those could be submitted in advance and formally present, you know, they could be, the answers could be formally entered into the record at the next, at the next meeting, just in the interest of trying to kind of keep things going along?
So, if I'm understanding you, you'd like me to present various questions?
I was just saying, by virtue of the fact that you've requested a continuance, to that point, any, if there would be any rebuttal or questions for consultants such as traffic, it would be helpful to the process so that we don't have to go up, push off any further, if those could be presented to the city in advance so that those answers could be received, so that those specific witnesses need not be here for the meeting. Would that be acceptable?
Yes, it would. Could you give me a date as to when you need the questions?
Let me look here. Sorry. All right, so we are at, we're on October 16th right now. If we said the 30th of October, that would give two weeks for response. Is that acceptable? I'm seeing nods.
That would be fine, Madam Chairman.
Okay. If that's agreeable to you, sir.
October 30th.
October 30th, so that gives you two weeks to work with council? Okay. And did I hear that Ms. Mao specifically would not be available, but presumably most of, is there somebody else from your team that has your knowledge, or should we ask for those questions as well?
I thought it was Monday. I can be here on Tuesday.
Okay.
I can't do the second Monday.
Okay. But we're going on Tuesday. Okay, so, there's been a motion with respect to the request for a variant, request for a continuance that's been carried over, and our next regularly scheduled meeting is November 13th, so the continuance will be carried over until that point. The neighboring property owner has agreed to present any questions to city staff by October 30th that he might have with respect to the traffic engineer, to facilitate getting those answers and that consultant not needing to be here for that meeting. And those answers will be entered into the record during our meeting on November 13th.
Yes, ma'am. Is it possible to pose any other question other than traffic?
Yes, you may. We were just trying to, we were just trying to make sure that we had a way for you to legally ask questions and get responses without necessarily-
So, the traffic doesn't have to be here?
So, that traffic doesn't necessarily have to be here, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any technical questions, if we could get them in writing beforehand, so that we don't have to bring a room full of documents?
Okay.
And we will do our best to bring the topographical survey.
Okay, certainly. Yes, yes, any kind of, I think that's reasonable, any question, any technical question, certainly, if something comes up at the meeting, something comes up at the meeting, but any questions that could be answered in advance, would it be appreciated? I will formally request that we do get an existing and a proposed- Anything else from the board?
Well, about what we're looking for? Because I know since Scott wanted to see the buildings behind, what it looked like from the street through the canopy to the buildings behind, so that would be helpful. I know that's not where you guys necessarily want to be now, but.
Okay. All right. I think that's it for that then, and we will revisit the issue of 2,400 Main Street DBA- And we will revisit the issue of 2400 Main Street, DBA 12ZMJV 0068, at our regularly scheduled meeting on November 13th. And I think I'm through with our written agenda here. Was there any other commentary or other items?
That would be it. Just to reiterate, if we can please make sure we have quorum for November 13th, that we can finish up the case, that would be excellent.
Agreed. With that, if there's nothing further, then we will be adjourned. Thank you very much. If I don't mind the opportunity to actually get the- What's this? What does that mean?
It blows north of town. Yeah, but you're so far east. I'm east.
I'm pretty darn east.
Yeah, so that's over town. You're East Ridge, though, aren't you?
I'm East Ridge.
I know. God left you in the South, all but by itself.
I'm sorry, Matt.
You're southwest. I'm northwest. You're south of me.
Oh, no, you couldn't go, oh, yeah, you're a little south of me, that's right.
There's one building between me and Howard Street. It wasn't all that clear.
The multitudes.
I knew you were pretty much down.
We've actually used you, right?